We're not at the point where we're going to make a motion yet, but my review of the budget is I think the municipal budget could be cut by between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars. Board of Ed budget, boy, nothing would make me happier than to go in for a flat budget. But I supported teacher increases, teacher salary increases. I've seen the data as well, and I know our teachers have been underpaid relative to other communities. And we asked the Board of Ed to fill their budget organically. What is your priority? And they have been very clear about it this year, that teacher salaries were not on a par, and that we were losing teachers to surrounding towns. And I support a salary increase for teachers. And they stepped up and took higher deductibles on their health insurance. And I appreciate the initiative on their part to try to meet us on that. Were it not for, I think we had, what, a twenty-one percent increase in health insurance premiums? I mean, it's just so hard. You know, we hear comments from the public to keep a flat budget. I mean, it's a tough time with healthcare. It just, every time you turn around, it kills us on that. So I know why we can't, in my opinion anyway, be on a flat budget for that. I will say also, though, that enrollment is down ten percent since two thousand and ten. That's only six years ago. And we've only reduced our full-time equivalents by two people. And that doesn't even include our admin. So I think that there is some room for us to be a little more efficient with our salary. So this is right out of the Board of Education proposal, their areas for potential long-term savings. The first one is to consolidate the elementary schools. I think the cost of running Nyannic Center right now is between five and seven hundred thousand. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's a considerable cost when you think of maintenance and the number of children that are attending that school. And I know these are difficult decisions. And I hope the community understands when we say this. We, nothing would make us happier than to give everyone what they want. But it is our job to try to be as fair and equitable to the town as a whole as we can. And we really, we have to address our elementary school situation, and we need to consolidate to two schools. Our staffing levels, I think, might be high, and as I talked about admin, I heard seven psychologists in the school system. I don't know if that's high or not, but it sure seems like it to me. And I hate to say that, it's not my area of expertise, but I think in these times, we really have to be prudent in reviewing, you know, our staffing levels. Out of the Board of Ed proposal, one of the things that was suggested was the relocation of the eighteen to twenty-one transition program. That would save fifteen thousand dollars. Relocating coastal connections would be another twenty-six thousand. Advertising revenue, which, I wince when I say that, because I've heard that now five years, and I feel like I get a pat on the head every year. Oh, yeah, Lisa, no, we're gonna do that next year. We're gonna do that next year. And I don't see any fruit there. I'm kind of sad about that. Not in their proposal was when the Salem contract is up for renewal. I don't know what our rate is on that.
I think they've already renewed that.
And was that this year?
I believe last year.
Did our rate go up? Did we request a higher rate?
I doubt I can.
You can actually find the agreement on the Salem Town Hall website.
How long is that contract for?
The whole history of all the memoranda.
I'm sorry. Don't know, okay.
Ten, maybe ten years.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what we did on that, and I didn't know when the contract was up, but
It's all there.
what a deal, to be in Salem, right? I mean, we had new pools, we had new tennis courts, we had a turf field, all the capital expenditures that we had to our school system. And they can reap a flat, they can pay a flat rate for that.
They do have a debt payment to the town to be slimed separate from their agreement in their budget.
I don't think they paid for, to be fair, just, I think they paid for their portion of the pool, or a portion of the pool.
Yes, they have a debt payment to the town.
There's some capital they paid for, obviously.
Right, you get where I'm going.
Thirty-four million dollars.
You get where I'm going with that. So when I look at the Board of Ed budget, my gut tells me with some changes that I think they can make, I'd like to see that budget reduced by two hundred thousand dollars. And I know, and I will say too, it's not easy for me to say that. I find that both Mr. Newton and the Board of Ed have been really transparent this year. There's been a lot more communication between our boards. It's not a fat budget. I mean, it's obvious when we went through that, it's not a fat budget. But for a forty-four million dollar budget, there's opportunities for some staff adjustments that I think can be realized, and that's the basis for my two hundred thousand dollar number. So those are my remarks. Steve, you there?
Yeah, Reece, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Would you like to share with us your thoughts on the budget, please?
Thank you. Thank you for running the meeting, Reece.
You owe me big, but go ahead.
Better to owe you than cheat you out of it.
Right.
You know, I listen to everybody, and I don't want to sit here and reiterate a lot of this stuff, because I think in our discussions, we kind of look at the same thing from a macro level, or what, you know, responsibilities we have to the community in the entire, in its entirety. I would like to touch, just as a couple of additions to what was brought up by yourself and the other board members, is the revenue side, I don't want us to lose sight of the revenue side of the equation, because really, at the end of the day, it's the effect on the, obviously, the local mill rate, which trickles down to all the property owners, both commercial and residential, industrial. But we know in our town that the lion's share of the taxes that are brought in on the grant list come from the residential taxpayers in town. So a couple of things. I went through some of the big items that are lower than last year. And I think between the reduction in our pilot revenue, the reduction in tuition that I think comes from Salem as it relates to other districts, and our sewer assessments, you know, we're somewhere in the vicinity of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in reduced revenue. So as we look at the budget, as much as we're looking at increases in the budget, you know, we have decreases right now that are pretty solid, in the ranges six seventy-five to seven hundred. As we all know, our fingers are always crossed every year as to what the governor does up at the state level and what trickles down to us after we've approved our budget. I kind of looked at the mill rate like I do, and see what the impact's gonna be on, you know, the median taxpayer home. And I was hoping that we could somewhere get in the vicinity of a half a mill increase. I think you guys had some meetings or had some statistics on that. But, you know, as I listen to everyone, I have my own numbers on the general budget, so I kind of cut to the chase. I had looked at the three-point-one percent increase in the Board of Education budget, which I believe translates to pretty, pretty close to what you said. I think a reduction of somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five thousand on the Board of Ed side. In the general government, I know, did we, did anybody touch on capital? I know in there we
I did, a little bit.
You know, our debt service is down, so I was just kind of curious, you know, the impact on really, when I look at general government, not necessarily capital or debt service. But your numbers, and I appreciate all the research you did on, you know, adjoining towns, because I think somewhere we have to be cognizant of what else is going on. So a two-and-a-half percent increase is a decrease in what on our general government side? Do you know?
Say it again. What was the question, a two-and-a-half percent?
If we, yeah, if we increase the general government side two-and-a-half percent, that translates to what kind of reduction?
Well, it's at three-point-nine-nine, right?
Right.
What are you saying, though, about the Board of Ed?
He said three-point-one.
Three-point-one, which I think, I think that's two hundred or two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So I'm not sure, because what we have here is a decrease in both budgets. So if we went down two hundred thousand in Board of Ed, I don't know what the decrease would be.
That's what he's asking is
Two hundred thousand in the Board of Ed translates to like a three-point-one percent increase.
Right, but you're asking, what would it be if the municipal budget was down two-point?
No, yeah, I was asking on the municipal side.
He wants the amount from three-point-nine to two-point-five, I think.
We have debt service that
And what's the money?
You're excluding debt service, correct?
I don't know what it is.
Steve, Steve, are you asking what the reduction would be if we get the general government increase from three-point-nine-nine percent down to two-and-a-half? Or are you, is that what you're asking?
Are you there? No, we're here.
Okay. Yeah, Camille, what does that translate to?
We're working on it.
Well, Steve, I'll tell you, based on the information that Anna provided, if you were looking to keep the mill rate increase down to a half of a mill, then we're looking at reducing the budgets by five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So, you know, that could be split.
Okay, so that would be two hundred from the Board of Ed and three-seventy-one from municipal. Is that what you're asking, Steve?
Yeah, but I think that, so that three-seventy-one, though, what's the impact? Listening to, philosophically listening, right? So my question was, what's a two-and-a-half percent increase? What, that translates to what reduction?
A two-and-a-half percent increase in the budget or the mill rate?
No, 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 two-and-a-half percent increase to the general government side, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So they're calculus.
So just reduce from three-point-nine to two-point-five. It's easier to do it that way.
Well, that's the number I came up with, right? Three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. If you reduce the general government budget from three-point-nine-nine percent down to two-and-a-half percent, that translates to three hundred and four, about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Perhaps Anna can tell me if that's correct. And if we reduce the general government budget by three hundred and forty-five thousand and leave the Board of Ed alone, the impact on the mill rate will be approximately point-six. So if you wanted to get it, if you wanted to get the mill rate increase down further, you're looking at an additional
Three forty-four.
Three, what's, five-seventy minus three forty-five. You're looking at additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Three forty-four?
That's what you said.
Going down to two-point-five is three hundred and forty-four five.
Yeah, I like to round. I like to round.
All right, so did you hear that, Steve?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
All right, so to go to two-point, let's just summarize, right? To go to a two-point-five percent increase in the municipal budget, what would, what did we say? We were cutting three forty, that would be equal to a three forty-five, kind of?
Three forty-four, yeah, three forty-five.
Did you say two?
No, three forty-four.
Three forty-five, okay.
Yeah, three forty-five.
Okay. So, keep going, you have other comments?
Board of Ed, he said three-point-one.
Which would be a two hundred thousand dollar Is that right?
Two twenty-five.
Okay.
What should I get, is a clue of five hundred and seventy thousand?
That's right.
And you said, I know Jason can't, but I was having trouble hearing at one point. He was at, what, two-five and
Right, two-five for town budget and three-point-three for Board of Ed, is what he put.
I was having trouble hearing, you know, it would break up my microphone. All right. So I mean, I'm a little under that, or, I don't know. It would be nice to get some feedback on, even that three forty-five for the town really may be, may be a challenge, but you were at, what, two-fifty?
Yeah, I said between two and two-fifty for Board of Ed.
And I said one hundred plus reduction in bonding, looking at the long-term capital plan. But I also had a question on your revenue numbers. You said the sewer assessment just didn't seem, it didn't
It appeared that, it appeared, go ahead.
It seemed to me they were the more stable revenue numbers than other numbers.
We're, how do we explain the sewer assessment that we
We don't get the benefit of that, right?
There's a reduction in revenue from the sewer assessment of four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Because I'm almost done paying my
Because we're almost done. We are almost done as a town, we're coming up in the last several years. Steve estimated six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in cuts in revenue. It's actually eight hundred and ten thousand. Pilot is one-twelve, but we kind of already, you know, taking that into account, we already knew that was coming. The Piquot fund is sixteen thousand, tuition seventy thousand, recycling fif, almost sixteen thousand. The OTI sewer assessment is four hundred and ninety-five thousand, and the fund balance is a reduction of a hundred thousand.
Yeah, Andy, is that going down to zero after this year?
I think next year.
Yeah, we have a couple more years, I think, after this.
But on the issue of, like, I think, Lisa, you had mentioned, you looked at the state trooper line, and you said this is unacceptable, but I think we were talking about, that had nothing to do with us as much as it had to do with the state letting go of their reimbursement rate on the state trooper contract.
That's true, but that's not the whole reason for the
Right, right, okay. And there was gonna be a decision made somewhere along the line about whether or not we dump the trooper program. Harsh, not to be harsh, it is a harsh word, you're right.
Dump isn't the right word, but it will be a better benefit and a better value to the town if we're paying the same amount, even if it's five percent more, but we're getting our own police force, and we can control it a whole lot better. You're gonna hear in future weeks of the, some of the struggles we're having over there right now with budgetary concerns and the lack of control. So, you know, we've had three troopers in the building the last year.
That's kind of what I went through, and you had a great one with Blanche.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have the nine-hundred-million deficit that's starting now, June, whatever, that the legislator's gonna have to work on, they plugged the easy one. What impact does a nine-hundred have on this year's current budget? What, any cuts, because it's gonna be before June thirtieth, on their fiscal budget?
General legis, at least the senate side voted Tuesday, Wednesday last week to keep the municipalities whole, that they weren't gonna touch the municipal budgets.
I know, for the two hundred and twenty-million hole.
Right. Going forward, next year, we don't know. There's no way to predict. Will we all take hits? Yeah, probably. Yeah, so that, next, this time next year, we'll be looking at what they're gonna do to us next year. But, you know, we still have a whole year to get through. You know that better than anyone, but, yeah, this time next year, we're gonna be looking at probably state cuts, significant state cuts.
And just
For the next two years.
Okay. Anna just had one comment on the Board of Ed. I agree with Camille in terms of her narrative and supporting no cuts to the Board of Ed this year. But one of the things that I'd like to see in terms of the school consolidation project is there's a lot of questions that are being raised, and I know that we're the, what-you-can-afford board, but I will be uncomfortable if questions regarding the Little B. Haynes property or any of these questions, whether they have, whether they're valid or not, that there isn't some type of running sheet as to questions are raised, what were the answers? Whether town council needs to get involved, and all this stipulation from nineteen-fifties has absolutely no relevance to X, or whatever the case may be, or, you know, whatever those questions are. And the same for the Board of Ed, I'm just urging that whatever questions comes up, so that it's as clean, answered, whether people like the answers or not, that that's done before it gets to us. That would make it more comfortable for me, sending it on to let the people weigh in on whether or not, what they want to do with the proposal, but
With all due respect, I think, you know, keeping to our budget tonight, and I think the Board of Ed will come, when they present a budget to you, they're not done with their proposal. They voted to move in this direction.
Right, no, I know, we haven't had
So that's why we're not gonna see it until May or June, because they're not done and prepared to send it. I'll tell you, there's a lot of misinformation out there, and invalid points too, invalid points too. I'll tell you that
I assume that the Board of Ed's gonna have community hearings, so
You will be able to, the Board of Ed will be here presenting to you, and you'll be able to ask directly and get the answers that you so desire. And I probably should leave it there, rather than try to clear up some of the misinformation, even that was talked about tonight. It will come, and, you know, again, you might hear these comments all the way until when it actually matters. I would urge the citizens to hold back and wait till the appropriate time, so you can digest all the information at the same time. Some of this stuff's gonna get watered down by the time you get to that place. But I wouldn't hold anybody back from making comments, it's their government, it's their town, so. But that comes from the zoning side, you know? When we hear a zoning application, we hear everything the same night. So, it, just good advice, but staying to the budget this year. And I don't know if you're still negotiating with Steve or you're in a place, but I give it back to you.
Okay, thanks. All right, so to the board, Steve, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can. So are we prepared to make a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion this evening?
Okay, well, I will
Excuse me, I was unclear. Let's do this in two pieces. We're gonna do the Board of Ed budget first. We're gonna do the Board of Education budget first, and then we'll do the municipal side next. All right, Camille, thank you.
So I will make the motion to approve the Board of Education budget as presented.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion?
At least, who seconded it?
Beth.
Beth Hogan.
Sorry.
I think, I think if we're gonna take these budgets, and if we're gonna look at decrease in them, I think right now, the Board of Education budget and the town budget are both fairly well-aligned. I think that if the salaries are below the DURG, but the overall school budget is above the DURG, then there's gotta be other areas, right? Because the, we are, if you look at that chart, the overall school budget is above the DURG. So although I support bringing the salaries back in line, I don't think that the town, the school budget is any more out of line with the neighboring budgets than the rest of the town. So I don't see, I don't see us cutting only the town budget and leaving the Board of Ed alone.
Okay. Do you wanna make a recommendation to amend that motion?
I think we're still discussing before we do.
I think you have to vote on this one and make your own motion.
Yeah, so we're still discussing it, I think, and then if it comes down to a vote, and if the vote's defeated, then we can talk about
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. Go ahead, Karen. No, he's not yet, but we do have
Does he wanna talk?
So Steve, are you ready to vote?
Yeah, no, if you're gonna bring that forward for a vote, yeah.
It sounds like we're gonna do that, all right? All those in favor for keeping the Board of Education budget as presented with no cuts, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye or nay, whatever you wanna call it. How about you, Steve?
I say nay.
Nay. Okay, so that motion did not pass.
So that's three-two, right?
Three-two against the motion. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
We're staying with the Board of Ed?
We are. For Steve, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, no. I mean, my motion is that it be three-point-one percent, or, you know, in this case, it's a take the two hundred thousand dollar, whatever two hundred thousand dollars you
It is three-point-one. Okay, so you're making a motion to cut the Board of Education budget by two hundred thousand dollars, resulting in a three-point-one percent budget increase, down from three-point-five-six.
That's higher than three-point-one, but
Correct?
Two twenty-five was
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
I can second that motion.
Is there discussion on that motion?
Yes. I think that that reduction is too large. I know that there is probably room for additional reductions in staff and even administration as we move to consolidate the schools. In my mind, this situation is no different than not consolidating the fire departments in town. We have two fire departments in town that we have talked about consolidating for as long as I've been on this board, and we still give them a pass. Until perhaps funds get approved to conduct a study regarding the, you know, feasibility of that, and what can be saved as a result of that study, you know, I don't understand why we're giving a pass to town departments but not the Board of Ed, when clearly the Board of Ed is moving in a direction that will get us to the end goal. So I do feel that two hundred thousand dollars is too much, and I don't think I would be able to support that.
I agree in that the two hundred thousand, though it doesn't sound like a lot, is a lot in this case. I did have the opportunity to sit through some of the Board of Ed meetings and read their minutes and talk to people about the direction they were taking, the fact that they looked at the revenue line, the fact that they have a new business manager who is realigning how those accounts should be. I think it's been the most transparent that it has, and it's acknowledging, I think, for the first time in its budget, the need to consolidate the schools. Because even though there was talk in the past of redistricting, I remember Camille, I don't know how many years ago it was, that she had offered to support the budget for the Board of Ed in full based on the fact that they move ahead with some type of plan, either through redistricting or addressing the fact that there were three schools opening and the high operating thing, and then there was nothing that happened. Now something is happening with the new superintendent and that, et cetera. And I also think that it's the first time that the Board of Education were unanimous in their decision of how they wanted to go about it. And they presented, did a reduction even before that they came to us consistently. I think that this year, I'd like to give them the benefit of doubt and support their budget.
Okay. Bill, any comments on the motion?
I think the way that this is gonna turn out, based on the conversation we've had to date, right now, the town budget is higher than the school board budget, Board of Ed, and I think we're gonna end up flipping that, so that the Board of Ed percentage raise is gonna be higher than the town budget. And I think that shows the Board of Ed that we're giving them due respect. I think everybody said that we appreciate all the effort they've done. And I think, based on the previous conversations, I think we're gonna show that the Board of Ed is doing better, as good, if not better than the rest of the town. Two hundred thousand dollar challenge is point-four percent, which
Right.
becomes a rounding error.
Yeah, Reece, I kinda conclude with Bill, but I don't think this is meant, clearly, from a communication standpoint, you know, them attending our meetings, certainly on a regular basis, I think the dialogue is much more constructive. I think, you know, I had said that, yeah, I don't want the new superintendent to be doing penance for past things, or us even, so, I mean, I don't want this to be misconstrued, because I really think that joining together with open lines of communication is certainly gonna do nothing but, you know, positive benefits, you know, to the town, to the students, and, you know, to everyone. And as Bill said, I don't look at it as a huge, I mean, really, it's a reduction and an increase. I think it goes in line with the spirit of everything that you said, and touches on a bit of what some of the public has talked about, what our challenges are. So I think on a forty-five-million-dollar budget, to take two hundred thousand dollars off is, I don't believe, excessive, and, we all know it's a challenge, I mean, these aren't easy times, it's certainly, I don't wanna deliver the message that, like everybody, I've always said, even at the last meeting, it's not, no one's against educating, and we're all aware of the importance of having a great education system, but I'll still stand by my motion.
Would you consider amending your budget to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut? Because I, as I'm listening to Beth and Camille, I understand, I, I see their, their view, I still think there's some room, but I'm more convinced that we could cut less.
Again, you know, to, to Bill's point, I think we're talking about such small amounts, you know, I'm, I'm happy to do that, fifty thousand dollars gets lost in the total budget of, uh.
Jim, I, it's twen, it's, it's twenty-five percent, right, of, of their original motion, so.
You know, we, we have a sixty-nine million dollar budget, so fifty thousand dollars really, to Bill's point, is a rounding error, so. That's something, again, I, I, I listen to everybody on the floor like you.
We'll take that rounding.
I like that rounding idea.
If you made forty-five million dollars a year.
Okay, so, what, I'm hearing you saying you're going to stand by your two hundred thousand cut, is that right?
I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll stick with the motion, but, but again, if it's not going to pay, you know, we're trying to get to a consensus.
Yeah.
Clearly, we only have five voting members, we need three, you know, you would be more comfortable with one fifty. You know, I'm, I'm not going to buck the majority, I think our board works well together, I think we listen to everybody, we listen to the public, so. Bill and I dissent, I'm, I'm happy to amend it to one fifty and, and bring that forward and if that passes, I think that's also probably in line or you know, it's probably more in line with even Jason, although he can't vote, so.
Right.
He, he can't vote, but.
I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Um.
I'm willing to do that.
Somewhere along the line, I heard that Jason would like to see the Board of Ed budget get down to, uh, a three point three percent increase.
Right.
Not quite as much as the one that you're proposing at three point one, but a three point three percent increase would be, I mean, uh, yeah, a three point three percent increase, you know, would mean that we would be taking off approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Would you be willing to amend your motion for a reduction to one fifteen?
I'm negotiating with my own board.
Hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
I think that's very reasonable and if Jason was here tonight, I think Camille and I would join with him.
Right, and it might have gone the other way.
That's true.
If all our members were present. So we're trying to work with you, Steve.
Well, hey, l- listen, that's fine.
And, you know, it's a surrounding error.
All right, so, and Steve, we support a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar cut versus your original two hundred.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah.
You will?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I would.
Okay, so the, the motion on the floor has been amended.
No, it hasn't been amended yet.
He just said he'd support that.
Somebody's got to make a movement.
All right.
Motion to.
You can, it was all, you're pending motion.
Reduction to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to cut the Board of Ed budget by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and it has been seconded, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify, I did. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries, Board of Ed budget is cut by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Thank you, Steve.
What was your vote?
Hundred and fifty, five zero.
Eh, you know.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, would anyone like to s- one fifteen?
One, one five.
Would anyone like to entertain a motion? I will entertain a motion, excuse me, on the, uh, general government budget.